I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do. You did? Good. We're going to convince everybody.
I want to welcome everyone to our September 9 meeting. And please note, let's see, Mr. Hagan is absent and Dr. Young are currently absent. Okay. First, items from council. Council, do you all have anything you want to bring up at this point?
Can we bring up things about the budget right now or do we have to wait till the budget?
I suppose it probably wouldn't hurt to wait till we get to that item. I mean, if you don't mind.
Well, I do have one question.
Absolutely.
And it's for Jared. Are we doing anything in Swan Crossing?
Are we doing anything in Swan Crossing? That's a pretty generic question.
Well, go Habitat. Any more Habitat going in there?
We are, as you'll probably know, the two houses that were started last week, week before last, with the United Way kickoff. There are two more lots that we, I believe, have given them to build in, I believe, starting in the winter time, they'll start two more houses. And kind of it's going to depend on their funding from there. Are you asking more specifically about if there's something, some budgeted items that we're going to do?
No, no. It's just that constituent came by and told me that he had seen some extra activity out there this week and he was just wondering if there was more Habitat houses going out there.
Not just Habitat, but also...
The regular Swan Crossing program houses, those are actively under construction. There was a, sorry, I haven't been out there in a couple of weeks myself. I know that there was a slab or two that had been poured and I know there's framing going up on one house. That's not Habitat, that's not associated with the Habitat down in the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
There's...
Now, are we going to keep all the Habitat around the cul-de-sac or are you planning to move some around?
The actual, the actual homes that are on the actual bowl with the cul-de-sac are not Habitat. Those are program homes that are just part of the regular Swan Crossing. They're just normal home buyers. And that's where there's some extra activity happening. So it's going to, we're letting those folks pick their lot. And so it will eventually, at some point, as the Swan Cross, as the regular Swan Crossing homes continue to expand, it will eventually mean that Habitat moves somewhere else, either out of the neighborhood or somewhere else inside the neighborhood. Because within the next few weeks, we're going to have a house started on the corner of Whistling and Swan there that's part of the, part of the program. So, and the last update I got from Darla was there's another four or five homeowners working through the process. So there should be some more construction activity happening there.
That might have been what it was, but he thought. And also, is there a limit as to how many Habitat homes we put in the neighborhood?
No, ma'am.
I don't think so, but...
Our, the only limits associated with the Swan Crossing neighborhood is how many homeowners can be over that income guideline, the HUD income limits, and that's 17. And I think we're around, I think there's around 12 to 13 of those lots left that can be sold to folks over the income guideline. If they're Habitat homes, they automatically are meeting that income guideline, CDBG eligible.
Mm-hmm.
Jared, I'm sorry, Ms. Solis. Council approves how many lots is allocated to, and so we have not allocated any more.
Anymore, okay.
Right. And it's, I'll need to go back and look specifically about those other two lots that Habitat hopes to build on in the, in the winter. We may not have dedic, may not have formally dedicated those or deeded those lots over to Habitat yet. So, but we're, we're only doing a couple at a time in order to be able to make sure that the maximum amount of lots are available to the homeowners and to make sure that we're holding Habitat accountable to the timeline.
Well, one of the reasons that the question came up is because when the appraisal district sent out their, their values, the particular value of this person went up sky high and get, you know, everybody else's. So his question was, is there going to be a certain amount of houses? I mean, are y'all going to have this many Habitat and this many, you know, program homes so that the values of those properties don't go, you know? Because he says the neighbor has a house that's, the square footage is bigger than his, yet his house is valued at a whole lot more than theirs.
That's, as you know, that's not something the city controls. I do know from hearing stories from Habitat that their homeowners were hit with very large increases. And I think collectively Habitat helped those homeowners do an appeal on their value. But there were Habitat homes out there with values of $150,000 to $175,000 before the appeal process went through. I do not know where those values settled versus anyone else, but I've heard that from Habitat. So I don't, at least at the outset of those appraisal values, there was no distinguishment between the value of a Habitat house and the value of a Habitat, a house built by someone else out there. They were just looking at square footages and assigning a value.
Okay.
But they are, tax appraisal value we're appraising considerably higher than the, than the cost to construct them.
Jared, what's the total number of homes there now?
I was trying to calculate that in my head.
I'm sorry.
There are 55 lots overall. I would venture to say there's somewhere around 22 homes that are lots that are no longer in the city's control.
So Habitat, those two that they're adding now will make it for 10?
Habitat has 10. I believe there's two more that they're, that they've asked us to dedicate to them. I just need to see if we've actually done that process and brought that to you. And there were five original homes. I think there's five or six in the cul-de-sac, there's three down at the other end, and a couple of more that we've already, the city has already deeded to the home builder. I just don't believe the homes that started.
Yeah, because I thought there were 10, you know, last time that we had looked at it.
Looks good.
So things are moving along.
I was out there for the United Way kickoff and I saw the two they framed up that morning and talked to a lot of the folks, so...
We've got a realtor down there actively working and working with folks and helping them through the process. It's, it's working. It's, it's slow, but it's working. At times, we're, we have more homes than the builder can accommodate, so...
Well, it was just a question.
Sure, sure. And that's up to council as to how many more, if you want to dedicate more lots to Habitat or not.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? Questions, anything? Seeing none, let's move to citizens' communications. If anyone would like to come forward and speak about any issue at all, this would be the time. Seeing no, no one coming forward, we'll just move into Section C, our ordinances.
C1 is an ordinance setting the tax rate at a total rate of .5840 dollars per $100 of property valuation and levying a tax upon all property subject to taxation within the city of Victoria, Texas for the 2014 tax year. For the use and support of municipal government in the city of Victoria, providing for the assessment and collection of taxes, apportioning said levy among the various funds and items for which revenue must be raised, including providing a sinking fund for the retirement of bonded debt of the city, providing for penalties and interest for delinquent taxes as prescribed by the Texas Tax Code, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date. This is a first reading, so we will need a public hearing. And mayor and council, I'll remind you that this resolution, excuse me, this ordinance requires a specific motion to be made. That statutory wording is on page two of the CM1, if you'd like to look at that as well.
Let's open the public hearing on C1. Anyone would like to speak specifically to that item, please come forward now. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion. Counsel?
Mayor, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .5840, which is effectively a .83 percent increase in the tax rate.
Second.
Does that satisfy our obligation?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there a discussion? Okay. So everyone, it's pretty clear in the CM1 how it's broken down and whatnot, so... Okay. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. C2?
C2 is an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for operating the municipal government of the city of Victoria for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2014, and ending on September 30th, 2015, appropriating money for the various funds and purposes of such budget, including appropriations of money to pay interest and principal sinking fund requirements on all indebtedness, repealing all conflicting ordinances and appropriations, providing for severability, and declaring an effective date. This is a second reading. We will have a public hearing.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing on C2. Anyone would like to speak about the budget in particular? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion, we adopt C2.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Discussion.
On any item, on the budget?
Absolutely.
Okay. A few months ago, they had brought a proposal forward to make a brick-and-mortar convention visitor bureau center. And we decided that the electronic media, we got more money for, you know, more value if we went with electronic. So I, I think that the proposal for the mobile unit is not something that we need to do at this time. I've had a lot of people say that that's just a waste of money. It's a glorified taco truck. You've got people in the elements, you've got people inside of the truck that still are not going to be in the AC, they're still not, I don't know what we're trying to accomplish with that, and I really, really don't, don't like the idea. I will vote against the budget because of that one thing.
But you can make a motion to amend the budget to remove that.
Okay.
And that would be the way to take it out if that's what council wishes to do, and that, that way you could still vote on the budget if you wanted to. So that's how I'd recommend you handle it.
You know, because last time when we voted on the budget, I, I didn't vote, but I didn't state it, so I realized that it went as an affirmative, but same time, I thought we were going to talk about it then, and then, yeah, I said, well, I need to find out when's the appropriate time.
So anything in the budget that any council member wishes to have removed, then I think just amendments to, you know, a motion to amend, and then, you know, see if you get a second and then vote on that. And we'll, we'll keep a list as we go through tonight on things that, and then on Tuesday, the 16th, anything that's changed, whether it's deleted or added, Gilbert will come back. When you get the 16th packet, it will have those numbers in there, so...
Okay. Well, see, I didn't remember for sure. And can we make suggestions if we want, you know, at this point, or?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what it's for.
Right now. You suggesting that the motion would take, could take place at any point, unless the process even right?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes.
So I can keep talking or do we have to vote on, you know, amending it or what?
Well, I would ask the legal, the legal advisor.
The correct way to make sure that it's handled formally is for you to make a motion to amend this, this ordinance to remove that line item from the budget.
Okay. Do I have to be specific as to what line item or just that we're removing it?
I think you can just say that $120,000 for the mobile visitor center will be sufficient.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the budget as presented, to remove that one line item from the convention visitors bureau for the mobile unit.
I'll second that. Okay. So we have a motion and a second to amend the CVB budget or fund, I guess you could say, be more accurate, to remove that item. Let's have some discussion.
Mayor?
Yeah, absolutely.
I've had some real thoughts on this, and I've struggled with it too, Ms. Solis, Mr. I spoke this morning with Ms. Roth, tried to get some more information on it, and I'm not totally sold on it as an idea. And as I thought about it throughout the day, I came upon the realization to myself that it's a budget item. We're going to see this come before us a number of other times. What exactly is it? What does the vehicle look like? How's it going to be used? In what manner is it going to be used? And there's still a few more decision points along the way. And I thought when I woke up this morning that I was going to do the exact same thing, make a motion to pull that out of the budget. But thinking about it the rest of the day, I think I'm, I'm in favor of leaving it in the budget, but I'm not on board for totally doing it yet. But I want to find out more about it. I don't know if that makes sense.
Well, if you're not, if you're not totally for it, you're not...
I don't have to agree to spend the money and agree to leave it in the budget, but I don't know enough about it yet, and I don't think we have the clarity to say whether it's a great idea on a cutting edge or if it can be an effective tool for us. I mean, I'm definitely against a bricks and mortar type of building, and I'd still think we need more attractions. But I'm okay with leaving it in the budget, even though I may not be okay with spending it at a later date once we know some more information, more information about it.
Let me give my thoughts. My thoughts are that, you know, certainly appreciate our visitors bureau and, you know, LaRue and everything they're doing and the good efforts. But on this particular item, I'm not convinced enough of the positive benefits for spending this money to commit to seeing it in the budget. And I have enough hesitation to say that, you know, that I don't feel, you know, that I can support Councilwoman Solis's motion to pull it out. And, you know, for me, that would be the most fiscally prudent thing would be to remove it, given the, you know, the concerns and reservations I have at present time.
Don't cut anybody off. Go ahead.
Well, LaRue, the trip, that excursion that we went on, remember that Sunday? I think the money would be better spent on something like that if we could have like some type of a tour bus or even if we could rent it or buy it or whatever you want to do and just take people to Goliath, take people to Rockport, take people here, there, to give them a reason to come here. You know, because you have a lot of people from the north that come down. They come in RVs. They can't travel. You know, they got to park their little RVs, they got to, you know, but if we had a place like you did at those 700 Main, you know, where we, everybody parked there, we got on the bus, I saw things that weren't, you know, and I've lived here all my life.
Right.
But, you know, even for the local people, that would be a fun thing to do and just spend the money on trips like that, you know, to take people to see the local area and, you know, I think that would be a better spending of the money instead of trying to, even renting a bus or buying a school bus, you know. I don't think anybody really used the facilities of the bathroom in the bus, so I think a school bus or something to that effect, then I could see spending a little bit money. But right now, that mobile unit, to me, you know, I don't think it's really...
And I respect your opinion about that, I really do. Where that came from was just looking outside the box and looking to the future, but we have also talked about your idea, not necessarily taking people around town, but the, the old Victoria driving tour is so popular, and we've talked about that. If we had a vehicle that we could go around the hotels and like maybe, you know, on a fixed schedule, offer just the driving tour. And then, you know, again, because we're talking about heads and beds and our hotels, I don't know that I'd want to take people to Rockport. I don't think that'd fit our mission or even be necessarily legal, but to have a small coach that we could give tours, to give tours locally. We've talked about that several times. It hasn't gotten, it didn't go anyplace, but, you know, we, we think about, we have a lot of ideas. We think about a lot of things. This particular idea came up in a conversation about visitor information services, which is a whole different subject to a certain extent. We've also talked about segways, you know, and we've had this conversation, at what point is the CVB a marketing organization and when do we become a tour operator? Is that our purpose? Should the private sector come in and be doing this? Should another nonprofit, one of the nonprofits who come to you and ask for hotel tax, would they, could this be a profit center for them to purchase a vehicle and offer tours? I think it could be. I mean, there's any number, so it, so the question becomes, what is the city of Victoria, what is our job? Are we to become a tour operator? Should we be buying segways and running segue tours? I mean, that's a possibility too, but at what point we cross the line and we become a competitor with the private sector? You know, so there's, there's a lot to think about.
And I think my position on this, she's the marketing arm. She's the person, the CVB markets the attractions that we have in town, not the tour operator. So she can, she makes suggestions and gives advice, but she's the marketing arm. And while you're still up there, would you mind explaining what Ms. Solis, the familiarization tour that Ms. Solis is talking about that was designed for hotel employees?
Right. And that was something we started actually in 2012, for the first time Victoria celebrated National Tourism Travel and Tourism Week. And one of the things that I've seen it done other places is the purpose of that tour is to get our hotel employees, especially the frontline employees and director of sales on that bus, to get them around town so that they can see things, just like you. We've had people that are frontline employees at hotels in past years. We were never able to fill up the bus the way I wanted to, and we have so much turnover at the hotel. So many times people on that tour have said, I've lived here all my life, I didn't think there was anything to do here, and I came on the tour and wow, I, you know, somebody said on, on this tour, they came away and said, you know what? I feel proud about living in Victoria. And I don't hear enough of that. I don't hear enough pride, and I get a little sad about that. I don't hear enough people from every level expressing confidence in our city as a visitor destination. We're spending money promoting the city, we're spending money on retail studies and retail recruitment, industrial development, and yet I hear people saying, oh, but we're really not that special. There's really nothing here. I think we need to decide, are we all in or out? Are we really, you know, are we about promoting Victoria? Do we believe in what we have and our potential? We hear it all the time, people come in the visitor center and say nice things about the city. You know, we do have stuff here. So that was the purpose of it. But again, we have a hard time getting hotel employees to spend their Sunday afternoons coming and doing what you did, and we had a great time. Yeah. So I'm always sad that we don't fill the bus. So next year, we probably will take a van or do something smaller.
I want to, go ahead. Y'all go first. Mr. Alvarez, did you want?
No, I mean, I had one, one immediate reservation. I think I expressed when you introduced the, the subject was, and I still haven't, you know, seen anything, what are your reoccurring expenses?
Right.
Because you're going to have to man this thing, it's going to take fuel, insurance, et cetera, overtime possibly, if you're going to do weekends and evenings. I don't believe you're going to just staff it with volunteers, I don't think.
Right.
There'll be payroll associated with it.
Right.
So a number of unforeseen or other reoccurring expenses that I have no grasp. Is that going to be $50,000 a year or another $100,000 after we put this into service? And again, the goals and objectives of what it's supposed to accomplish still is vague, and I would like to see more of that information.
The number was provided.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
You gave an annual figure.
Right. We estimate an annual, annual cost of $5,000 a year for insurance, maintenance, and fuel, and that depends, of course, on how much we take it out on the road. And you're right, the staffing thing could be a consideration right now with four staff people. I don't see that being a problem. I do think that when we have it in town, that we will get support from our, our travel partners. For instance, there's a great event coming up in a couple of weeks at the Texas Zoo, Coyotes and...
Cowboys and Coyotes?
Coyotes, Coyotes. Wouldn't that be, you know, and it's a great event, and they're growing it. Wouldn't it be great to have this really tricked-out little truck down there, open up with video and brochures and people coming into town, and we could be there with this big explore, red Explore Victoria trucks and just say, bah, here we are. You have some more questions? You need a hotel room tonight? Stuff like that. We wouldn't be there all weekend, we'd only be there for a few hours. Now, having said that, will it be the end of the world if this does not happen this year? No. No. We're going to work hard and we're going to keep promoting Victoria and we're going to do a great job. You know? It was, it was an idea, it's maybe ahead of its time.
I would submit that your usage would be extremely high. I started an event Saturday morning in the park. There was another one Sunday morning. I think once people realize that you will come down and be present there, you will see a lot of usage. Now, I would imagine, and back to what Mr. Alvarez, he had some good questions, the expenses, you gave an estimate based upon best guess, which is what a budget is, but you'll use flex time to some extent.
Oh, absolutely.
You'll have volunteers, you're alluding to volunteers helping with it. So the additional, you know, as compared to the alternative, either A, nothing, B, a standalone center, the expenses that would go along with that would be much higher, I would imagine.
Right, right.
So I feel like you pretty much answered that. We may disagree, Mr. Alvarez.
And we are an emerging destination. I understand that, you know, and we are not just years behind, but decades behind. So when I'm asked to look to the future and where we are today, and what is, the question is, are we providing adequate visitor information services? That is for you to decide. Are we doing a good job? And if we're not, how is, what is the most cost-effective way to do that? This is one option. But it provides a mobile flexible tool, not only service but sale. Again, I'll emphasize, if you all decide not to do it, we're still going to do a great job, but we're so glad that you at least considered it. And I think down the road, it's going to be an idea that you're going to embrace. I really do.
Mayor, I want to make one more comment. No, just to say that my big, my biggest concern is return on investment, but I have no concern on my return on investment about you as a, as a working at the visitor bureau.
I understand.
You do such a, please differentiate, because I think you do a wonderful job as an ambassador for our city. And, but it's just specific to this, you know, and how I look at every object.
I understand.
Return on investment, and we can, maybe there's different views on whether this would have the ROI.
Right.
I have some reservations about it, and that's where I'm coming from, and that's where my vote lies, based on that.
I understand completely.
But I certainly respect your perspective, and I know you put a lot of hard work and thought in it.
For the, for the purpose of debate, you know, I, I think it's very difficult to see often tangible returns in everything your department does.
Exactly.
I mean, to compare, you know, you buy ads in Texas monthly. I think the last time, for example, we discussed this, I mentioned, well, to me, the number to see it in is in our sales tax returns to some extent, and our hotel motel fund returns. Other than that, it's almost impossible. And I trust, I do believe in what you're doing, and I trust your judgment, and that's what we pay you and your department to do. Also, with respect to what Mr. Bocknight said, this is just in the budget. We will see more information, and we could choose not to spend the money on it six months from now when you actually brought something forward too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I would strongly encourage council to just leave it in the budget. Let's learn more, we'll get more feedback. And remember, the folks, the local folks, with all due respect to their opinions, you know, they're not paying this tax, our visitors are, and it's, it's meant for those out-of-town guests. Their view of our community is just different. I grew up here too, and sometimes I forget how beautiful the city is, but it is wonderful.
It is.
So keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Someone that lives here, this is not necessary to benefit them, and so, Mr. Jalapaska or Dr. Young?
Well, I was about to point out some things that you were. This is hotel occupancy funds, not general funds, and so it isn't going to change the tax rate for the taxpayer. It is an out-of-the-box thought process that I think is worth trying, and the alternative is standalone building, and I don't think fixed fortifications work in any battle. And our battle is to get this town more, better known.
I would echo that sentiment. I believe that bringing the center to the masses versus having the masses come to the center is the way to approach this, and I applaud your, your vision in that regard.
Thank you.
I do have one question. How much is a billboard that we spend on advertising, Victoria?
How much? We, right?
A billboard.
Um, we have two boards under contract right now, and I believe that contract is about $15,000.
$15,000 per year?
Per year, per year.
Okay. So $15,000 per year, you wrap this vehicle around with a, it's a movable billboard.
It is a movable billboard.
So you can take $15,000 per year. That thing's going to be here, we said, for about 10 years?
We think so. And it will, it will change the wrap.
Boom, paid for itself. That's $150,000. It will change the wrap, I understand that. But we're talking 120. But we're talking 120. You have a moving billboard. A billboard that's going to be seen in Houston, possibly. San Antonio, possibly.
Very much so.
Other locations, bringing it to other people that may want to visit us.
Mm-hmm. For sure, at the back, we'll paint a sign that says, follow me to Victoria.
Sure.
We'll have a whole parade coming back with us.
I see that as a great source of advertisement as well, beyond just its function as a visitor's center. So I think that that cuts down into the, into the money as well, and it's something to look at.
I understand your reserve about spending the money. And I also want to caution you, if you decide to leave it in the budget pending some kind of design, I don't think they'll get any company to do any design work for us for free. So...
Understood. Okay. Good discussion. Any more? Okay, for clarification, the amendment was to remove it. So to vote for the amendment would be to remove the funding, and to vote against it would be to leave it there. Okay? So all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, is there any, y'all have, y'all need clarification on that?
You got that?
You got it.
All right. All right, very good. Thank you, counsel.
So that, for people on TV, that was, that amendment failed on a three, four vote.
But don't we have to amend the overall budget?
Five, two.
Five, two. I'm sorry. Five, two.
Do we have to amend the overall budget?
No.
Because the C2 says 154 million.
The orders, it's allocating each one by itself. It adds up that way, but the budget ordinance is each fund total expenditures. So you use, what you did there was satisfied.
I know, but the total on your resolution, or your ordinance is 154 million, but didn't that go up to 155 million?
Oh, no, it's in there already. The 120 is in there.
It's already there.
Yes, sir.
You were voting to remove it.
You were voting to take it out.
Oh, I understand that. Okay, okay. But I'm just saying, on your ordinance, it says 154 million, but your packet, your changes, your updates, all...
I haven't got to that part. I haven't got to that part. Sorry.
We're going to do that at the end.
Stand corrected. Whenever y'all finish...
Not tonight.
Well, I like...
Well, whenever, I think whenever y'all are finished with any other questions, or is there any other questions on the budget, any other suggested changes to the budget?
That's correct. And then I was going to propose these changes tonight.
Is this what you gave us here? You left?
Yeah.
Do you have suggested language? You didn't just...
Well, no, exactly. I just need somebody, on the second page of the, I just need somebody to make a motion to reflect these changes. As you recall, last week, I sent out an email dictating all the changes, and I just hand out a pamphlet, a booklet with the actual document, so you can go back to your actual original budget and change out the individual pages that have changed.
Okay.
But what I need is a council person or person to just amend the budget with the suggested numbers listed on page two.
Is there anything you'd like to present further before we do that?
That's all I was going to do.
If not, I'll ask counsel to make that motion to amend for this information as presented.
Is there any specific language that needs to be used, or just...
I'll leave that up to Thomas.
No, sir. It's a standard amendment, so it's just a motion to amend the budget to adopt this language.
Opposed to amend the, to amend the budget as listed in this paper here. Is that formal enough?
That worked. That worked.
I'm sophisticated that way.
I thank you, chart.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, mostly housekeeping items.
Can we have some discussion?
Absolutely.
Can you go over it, please? Which are the changes?
There are four different funds. And the first one's in general fund. There's two basic difference changes in there. One is dealing with the city manager. As I mentioned last week, I failed to include the costs associated to Ruby, her executive sector, which is retiring. There's a cost associated to, you know, you've got vacation sick leave, and of course, you've got retirement insurance involved. In addition, there's going to be a little overlapping cost to, the one bringing somebody in, so there's a time period for training too as well there. The second item in general fund, of course, deals with PD's payroll. As you recall, about a month ago, the auto theft grant came in last, and was, we should thought it would come in out, so it's about 20, I believe, $26,000 adjustment downward on the grant, increase to the general fund cost payroll. On motel tax, of course, we added the outside agencies. Of course, you're going to note, there's 399,999. There's a dollar difference due to the fact, of course, when we did this allocation, we did it on an Excel spreadsheet, and we used rounding numbers. So it was entered into the resolution that way, so we went with that number as well, which is $1 difference. The other item, of course, is the carryover money for the Main Street facade and their original 2014 left door funds to 2015. Okay? The Community Development Block Grant, of course, as you well know, council decided to go with a splash pad project, and as a result of that, we're going to use some money from Community Center. There was some program income that was not in the original budget, so I'm adding the program income plus the other, the cost was $15,000 each. And of course, the auto theft, because as I mentioned, general fund, I got to reduce that grant by the same amount. Those are the changes. And of course, I put the color tabs, because I recall last year, I think, there was a comment that it was very difficult to follow which ones. But so I just tried to be creative. Staff Tiffany did a great job in trying to coordinate the colors. To be honestly, I was going to put actual yellow color there, green color on the first page, and red, but she told me that'd probably be offending y'all guys. Y'all pretty smart enough to read it, and so I took it off. So I thank her for that suggestion. But I left the tabs. Anyway, the tabs, of course, I'm repeating it, has all the changes. Just take out the old ones and substitute the new ones. And the changes are highlighted in yellow, so if you want to see what changed. That's all I have. Mayor?
Very thorough. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the budget as according to the information presented by Mr. Raina. He explained somewhat. Is there any further questions on that amendment? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that amendment passes. Now, we still have the motion and the second on the budget, on the second reading of the budget. Is there, we can still talk about the budget, if there's anything anyone would like to bring up? Okay, seeing no one jump at the chance.
Okay, I just have a question. The 11th then is going to be the absolute last day. We can change anything on the budget.
The 16th.
The 16th, you can still do it? I thought you wanted to...
We've got a meeting Wednesday, Thursday, 11th.
With the tax rate.
But, you know, I think the budget's on there too as well. So you got the 11th and the 16th. Well, 16 you can do it too.
The 16th is the absolute...
The last.
The last day that we can, I thought that was your question.
Oh, I'm sorry. The last day. I apologize for interfering. 16 is the correct, yes.
I don't want to give you extra work, but just to...
Really?
Yes.
Oh, I appreciate it.
But please also understand, the budget is a roadmap of expenditures. It's a flexible document. You know, we can amend it literally any time, subject to any legal restrictions. And we do amend it, obviously, right, throughout the year. So always remember that. I'm sorry. Okay. Any, Mr. Baughnite, did you have?
It is nice to take questions ahead of time, though. If anybody has questions, we can work through those.
Absolutely. Okay. Don't want to cut anybody off, seeing no one interested in discussing. All those in favor of item C2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so was it five, two?
I think so.
Right. All right, consent agenda.
We have one item on the consent agenda tonight. It is a resolution awarding Fire Station Number Six project to Lager Companies Incorporated of Victoria, Texas, for the construction of Fire Station Number Six, for their bid of $2,701,180, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
Counsel?
Move we adopt?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. That's consent, but we can discuss it. I don't think anyone, if anyone would like to. It's the only item on there.
Yes, I'm going to apologize. It was not the intent to be on the consent agenda. It should have been on as a resolution for discussion, so, but y'all could have pulled it.
It's just bumping it down a line. It doesn't matter. It's fine. We're still getting our business done, so is there any...
Were we able to get everything ironed out that we were discussing last time?
I meant...
Because we were negotiating at a negotiating point last time.
Yes, instead of 2/8, it's down to 2/7. Then we will, once we sign a contract, we'll continue to look for savings.
Did you ever come up with what the big cost drivers were besides soil conditions?
We haven't seen the breakdown yet of the schedule of values.
Schedule of values, yeah. You can't get that until after you award a contract, correct?
Until we sign a contract, then he has, then we'll look at them, and that'll be our opportunity to look and see if they've got recommendations for doing things differently, trying to look for opportunities to drive that down.
So you're still going to look at other items to draw it down even further?
Well, now it'll be more on the construction side. If they, if they see things that within our spec was too over the top, or they'll have the ability to, we'll ask them to look for areas in which we can still get the project done as we want, but maybe at a little better cost savings.
Okay. I noticed that y'all deleted the chain link fence and the gates. That we can add later on. So are there other items that you can possibly not put in right now and then bring it back up?
Well, we're still doing the chain link fence and the gate and all the fencing. We're just doing it in a non-construction account. It was, it was to our benefit of about $12,000 to do that ourselves. So we're going to, we'll contract that ourselves as a city, as opposed to letting the contractor do that.
The general contractor would charge us an additional fee for anything he does.
You know, the street department built their own building that way back when. We don't have a construction crew that could do some of the inside work now anymore?
No, ma'am, we don't. We're down to just a maintenance crew that maintains buildings. We've kind of gotten out of the construction business. So...
I wish I knew more how to do it. You probably wouldn't look very good.
I have no doubt you would try to build your own station.
[laughing]
But, you know, the architect was here, showed us some examples of rising construction costs in other projects, and I think it's unavoidable. Now, I understand that you guys, staff, will always look for ways, once the project starts, to trim a few things out, because that's money out of your budget, and you're sensitive to that, so.
I mean, that was our goal going into it. It really was. I know it doesn't appear that way with the budget that's been presented, but I think we're a victim of the economy that we're in right now.
I would agree, and that will, station will improve the response times drastically out there, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely.
911 calls are seem to be the big deal. Probably, to me, my perception is that's, you know, getting there quick to save people's lives is critical. So this, I look at it as this station will be there, I hope, 50 years and serve the community for a long time. And the little incremental costs, little bit of pain that it is now that we wish we could avoid, but over the long term, will be worth it, so.
Well, some of the cost-cutting measures, the fence and so on like that, were a little bit strange to me. We're still going to need a fence. If we kick it down the road one year, you're still going to wind up buying a fence, so I'm not sure how...
We're still going to do a fence. We're just going to do it in-house. We're going to do the contracting ourselves in-house, so we'll save a little money. That, it's just coming out of the construction side for his contract. No, we'll still do a fence.
It'll still be done at the same time the station's built.
Yeah. The public won't know whether we're handling it or the contractor's handling it, so it'll still be done.
No, but it's a good catch, you know, ways to do it. Some things we can maybe do a little cheaper.
We did the fences ourselves at the other stations, I believe. I know Tanner probably don't remember, but I think we did.
Okay. Well, all I know is when you had the firemen painting the fire hydrants, that was impressive enough. So no doubt, if you could get them to build fence, you know, one day, they probably would, so.
We got some fence builders. They probably build cattle fence better than...
I know.
We've got to have room for the barbecue. We can put some barbed wire up and probably be okay.
We don't need to do that, so. Okay. Any further discussion on this item? We do have a motion. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that item passes. What's left?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, counsel, and we are adjourned. See you Thursday. We have a meeting Thursday.
Yes.
Hey.